This is the Planning Board Subcommittee meeting on March 27, 2014, on the Stormwater Management Orders. Could we wrap up citations first? We only had a very few items.
You can do whatever floats your boat.
I was on page 11 in the citation document dated January 22.
Hey, you were on the ordinance page 11?
No, we were on page 11 of... yeah, I'm sorry. We were on page 12. I guess these are pages enough here. Second to the last page of Paul's document. Footnote citations entitled "January 22."
This thing right here, it is Paul's reference to the...
Oh, okay.
...itself.
All right.
Yeah, so that's the January 22.
Oh, maybe I didn't have it.
It's possible.
No, I only have it in December. Not in February. This citation, this is one of your four pages, right?
Can I do have a copy?
And we're referring to page 12.
I do have a copy of V5 if you don't have one.
No, I got it. Just getting oriented.
Actually, there is an updated one that says February 13th, am I right?
Feb. 13 is actually the V5 that was discussed on February 27, because we've had a couple of postponed meetings. So I... this is the February 13th discussed, Feb. 27, which I think was our last meeting. Hard to imagine we've been away from this bliss for so long.
Feb. 23 it was.
Feb. 27 is what I've got. I'm pretty sure that was our last meeting. Reasonably sure, anyway. All right, so I'm trying to find a network to connect to here.
And we're referencing, and we reference pages in this four or five-page document. We're referencing pages in draft 5, am I correct?
D5, yes. So I think there might have been a couple of minor changes based on our discussions, but nothing that we necessarily needed to print off. And I'll see if there's any manual notes. All right, now there is.
Jess, did you... were you able to tell me this?
Yes, I have everything.
So mayhap we got internet connection. All right, so...
Do we need what you're finding?
No, go ahead.
We ended on the second citation on page 12. You might want to... right here.
Okay, so page 12 as of the V5?
Yep.
Ooh, excuse me. Also had... so that's footnote citations. Do you have a copy of footnote citations?
Yeah.
Okay, so... All right, so now I have the actual... Okay, so now I have the actual working ordinance. So specific design requirements, roughly is where you are?
I think it might be in under... Low-Impact Development, probably. I'm assuming it is, because we, up above that, we just took care of the phosphorus control.
Let's pull up my citations. That's where they learn using this computer for just double-check what's out there in the world. Just say, say, and page 12. Okay, so, um...
I think...
According to... Okay, so I was just looking here. Okay, so we're looking at Low-Impact Development Plan. Oh, I think... I think we had just sort of realized that we were now bringing back elements of the basic and alternate versus incidental and non-incidental. Would you want to discuss briefly your vision of that and how they don't actually mess us all up?
Yeah, I think we had reached consensus at the last meeting that the designation of level of disturbance uses the terminology that we glean from Jesperson's incidental and non-incidental. That's the categorizing level of disturbance. The type of remediation that is brought to bear on those various levels of disturbance are labeled alternate or basic, or priority-wise in our terminology, basic and all. And Gavin and I were discussing this very briefly today. He had some insight into why the question that you and I had been discussing on the phone the other night, whether basic was only pertinent to the lower threshold incidental disturbance. And he cleared my mind up in his thinking that he shared with me today. If you could help me with that, Gavin.
Well, either basic or alternate could apply to either incidental or non-incidental. The applicant could always choose the alternate if their buffers aren't big enough for the basic or for other reasons, they could choose the alternate anyway if they chose to. You know, just because they felt it was a better system or sometimes it's a better design for a property. As, you know, smaller properties would need to use it as an standard.
Okay, so just for perhaps greater clarification and for, definitely for your benefit, Jess, we're starting to bring those particular two terms back into the vocabulary, even though we sort of worked to get rid of them earlier. And the reason for that is because we're now contemplating taking... Basically taking the forms or much of the forms or the spirit of the forms or the applications from the state. And it's all over those. So that's kind of where we're actually now talking about that, the basic and the alternate. They are remediation, degrees of remediation that correspond with the state forms, with the state applications and a certain amount of the state documentation that we're trying to do citations to or around. Where the incidental and non-incidental is really more referring to the scope of the work being done. So the premise at this moment is that, and I don't know if it's, if we're going to actually get a good distance before we trip over something, but the premise right now is the scope of the work is incidental or non-incidental, and that's what we've been really working with here. I mean, the scope of the disturbance, the project, you know. How you're going to remediate that is going to be tiered as well, basically, with basic and alternate, alternate. And that's from state language. And that's all's I know in this time.
No, I thought half was going to be remediated was through LIDs and BMPs. I mean, I... I just, thinking back on it, I see it as two different approaches. I see this levels of disturbance using incidental and non-incidental as different language than what the state is using.
That was my impression and arguably could still be my impression. I'm just sort of stating what the freshly reoriented perception is. And it was, and it really came up late in the game on our last, on the last workshop. We were starting to talk about, a little more seriously about what are these forms going to look like? And that's when the concept came in, well gee, can we not use some of the state forms? But, oh no, the state forms doesn't use the language we're using. And that's kind of, this cropped up. So it perhaps either needs to be firmly discouraged in very clear terms or we need to pursue it further to figure out if in fact they really are compatible in some form. And there you have it. Ball's in your court, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I guess I would address the page, just as a quick overview here. Page nine and 10 in the LID Guidance Manual for Main Communities.
You know, I think if you guys are inclined to want to use the state stuff, let's write an ordinance using the state stuff and just copy what the state says.
And if we're going to do that, what's the point? Just refer to the state and be done with it, right?
Yes.
Actually, I think I'm just going to go to the LID Guidance Manual.
Okay, what part of the Guidance Manual are we referring to?
I'm looking at chapter 2, New Single Family Residential Development. Kind of basic, studying.
Okay. Okay, so in, on page 12, we do have a citation that's going through that manual. We don't actually, we sort of having it, looking at the whole section, although maybe what, 2.3 and 3.3 LID practices for residential? I'm sorry, bud. I'm close, sorry. Thank you. So looking in chapter 2, New Single Family Residential Development. And I think this was actually as well, kind of late in the game on our last workshop. You know, where do we go in this manual to find something that talks about this thing that we're having a citation to here? So it's talking about LID Manual for Main Communities Approaches for Implementation of Low... blah, 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 blah. What do you guys... All right, so I'm not actually seeing that in the text. At least not on 12.
I'm on page nine. I'm on... I'm sorry, I'm in the LID Guide.
Oh, excuse me, all right. So in the Guidance Manual itself, I'm on page nine, that's where it begins, for chapter 2, New Single Family Residential Development, yes. All right.
Here too. Just the verbiage under basic LID standard.
Okay, so are we actually referring now to, or trying to dig into neatly sidesteping the conversation we just had?
No.
But we're talking about the citations, is that, yes or no? I mean...
Oh, no, because they're getting at the kernel of what you raised.
Well, this is a citation too on page 12.
Okay, but the upshot of where we're going at this moment is trying to nail down this business about the two different sets of terminology?
Yeah, we're going to stay with Jen's terminology.
Okay, so here I am on chapter 2 on the LID Manual, page 9.
And maybe, maybe, maybe using the Jesperson language is a confusion that we don't need to get involved.
You mean the incidental or non-incidental?
Yeah, why, why... Because it's kind of woven into the standard and yet within the standard is not only delineated the level of disturbance, but also the means by which it's, they propose to be remediated, i.e. each lot must meet the basic LID standard for single-family residential listed above, which basically includes buffers. And that's basically the whole thing of basic.
So shall we perhaps see if, I mean, I assume that you're going to want to go with a... When last spring, Warren Finance was kind of looking over what was proposed to go forward in public hearing, there was one, basically one size of trigger mechanism. And I know you don't like that word, but that's what it seems like to me.
That was invoking.
Invoking, okay, I'll avoid that one. Trigger, trigger's okay, right. So there was one level of trigger mechanism at which this new stuff, which I'll broadly call stuff, this new language, this new ordinance would kick in and make for certain requirements. And that level of, that triggering mechanism, when it invokes certain things, that the stuff... I'm sorry. Did both. What was included in that language was, you know, the calculations of the phosphorus and all that stuff. And so what we have at this time, after having started this process, and so that was pulled off, pulled off from the path to go to town meeting, we started this process, we actually backtracked to one generation of that document ago, in which it was in a very different form and had general buy-in from the Planning Board that, yeah, this is the thing that we like. And the only real thing, the key difference between that and what we were working with previously, other than basically a whole lot of what it's trying to do, is that it had not yet been integrated into the general zoning ordinance. So the first thing we did here is to say, take this document that everybody liked, you know, the Planning Board liked, integrate it into the zoning ordinance by messing with the numbers a little bit or adding a pre-pen to stick it where it needed to be, and then kind of moving forward. And that's really where the incidental and non-incidental language came from. It came from that document that everybody seemed to like. And there were, one of the problems with that document was that it was making statements that wasn't really backing up to say, where did this come from, or how can I tell when this is going to be true, or how do I do that thing that's asking me to do? And that's kind of where we are now, trying to tie the larger picture and much of that being state-originated with this document that we've been working on. So now we're kind of really coming head-on into this situation where we're talking about, we're not so much talking about incidental and non-incidental, because that was the language on this document that we're working with. We're really much more talking about the basic and the alternate. And I guess, when you get right down to it, if we're trying to look at this thing, this LID thing, why don't I look for the word incidental in this document?
In which document?
You won't find it.
In the LID book?
You won't find it. That's Jesperson's language.
Yeah, not one reference. Okay, so being able to use this document here, we're definitely going to need to tippy-toe around a bit in order to avoid things that we don't want to be bringing into the picture.
I'm literally lost.
Well, let's just, just for example, I would suggest maybe on page 9 in the LID Guidance Manual. Does anybody have that?
I have it.
Let's just look at...
Chapter 2.
Under the heading 2.1, Basic LID Standard for New Development. And kind of hold that up to Jen's work of the definition of incidental disturbance, which is on page 6 in draft 5. I think if we looked...
And you're in 2.1, correct, Basic LID Standards?
And I think if we looked at Jen's work, I think generally she is a little more protective maybe of the resource and... versus the thresholds that are laid out within the basic LID standard.
I know one of them was bang on, let's see. 2,000, okay, so non-incidental.
We'll just do that.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to get a match to what they're talking about here. Individual lot must be less than 15,000 square feet, which is what the basic is that I'm looking at. And in fact, yeah. Greater than 5,000, less than, equal to 10. Right, so then on the basic then, it's really not talking about minimum at all, apparently.
Right, it's just this rather large trigger. About 15,000.
15,000, and what's non-incidental here, greater than 10. Greater than 2,000, or greater than 10 on slope sequence.
And she pulls in the slope.
Well, we have slope as well.
Right, no, I'm saying Jen pulled in the notion of slope.
Ah, yes, okay.
It's kind of critical in our ownership, because we have a lot of steep slopes around.
Yep. So... I think Gavin had kind of, at the end of the last workshop, come up with, and so I'm going to go back to the citation here for the LID manual. The attempt, when we were talking about this, was to go with section 2.3 and 3.3 of this LID guide, because it really just talked about the practices without really getting into the triggering mechanisms or definitions thereof. So 2.3 LID practices for, I think that was, is that the basic? Basic. Alternate, okay, so we've skipped over basic and alternate. And we're just talking about LID practices, and what the heck was 3.3? Okay. And then chapter 3 is the non-residential and multifamily. So we skip over again those two sections and then go to LID practices. So that's kind of where we left off, that we were saying, okay, go to the LID Guidance Manual. We're talking about at the bottom page 12 in our, in our ordinance, Specific Design Requirements Low-Impact Development Plan. So when it's going to be talking about the LID, the LID plan, we were going to have the citations go to 2.3 and 3.3, because that's where it talks about LID practices. And also in this same guide discusses the buffer filter strip, the under-drain slope filters, the dry well infiltration trench, et cetera. And that's the commercial, and I think those are a little heavier duty than if you look in 2.3. There's like five items there, and they're not quite as intensive because they're made for residential properties. Yeah, so you got your sister and permeable, I think. Anyway, there's seven items in the commercial and multifamily, non-residential and multifamily development. There's seven items there, there's only five items in the single-family residential.
Why can't we just refer to chapter 5, Practice Profiles, which is on page 17 in the LID manual?
We may well be able to do that. Practice Profiles, this chapter provides a profile of each of the recommended LID practices describing the LID Guidance Manual for Main Communities. The following LID practices are presented. So basically, any of those, if they will work for you, conceivably you can use them. And then it goes down in talking about how each of them is defined, what their limitations are, when they might be used. Certainly a lot of that laying there.
I think that's what we were referring to when, this is referring, I believe, in the paragraph that says, that refers, you know, on page 12 in that FB document. I think that was our intent, was simply to let people know there was a place where they could find the practices that we're talking about so that they could make their plan. So in that way, I mean, in that way, people don't have to get 2 and 3 if they don't want to.
Well, it cites the whole manual there.
Okay, so...
Well, yeah, that's what we're trying to find now.
Just cite the whole manual, I mean, if you're going to be doing this stuff, might as well look at the whole manual, not just one part of it. I think it's fine to cite the whole manual.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think that that item, the super script 2, that was talking about in accordance with the main LID manual, I'm pretty sure that that's the last one on that page. And that is in fact the one that perhaps could benefit from just going to chapter 5 and you know.
Wait, you're jumping around the citation, aren't you?
It's all sort of the same.
What, I guess I'm trying to see if we can avoid getting into basic and non-basic. But if we're going to be using the...
If we cite the...
If we're going to be using the forms from here, I don't think there's any way around that we're going to have that verbiage.
And if it's, yes, in citing the manual, we're kind of...
That's the structure we usually use.
We're kind of adopting the basic and alternate.
Didn't we come to the conclusion that basic and alternate wasn't going to be suitable for shoreline because it wasn't going to capture anything? And it wasn't going to end up... I don't know, I mean, I just, I'm thinking back to long discussions from the past, but... You know, the problem with both of these approaches, and I think there's a problem, there is a problem with the FB document. The FB document is designed to capture big projects, and we're trying to capture little projects. I don't know if the language of using alternative and basic, if you want to use these standards, we just have to pick one of them, you know? We can't do both.
So you're seeing the basic and alternate and the incidental and non-incidental as being directly contradictory to each other?
Not contradictory, separate.
But just incompatible in the same set of documentation?
Right. I mean, it's four different, it's, you're trying to solve the same problem using two different formulas. Just pick one, and then we'll...
Incidental and non-incidental is just the level of disturbance. Incidental and non- incidental is just the level of disturbance, how much activity is occurring, and then how the owner addresses the activities would be addressed through the basic or alternate LID standards, depending on...
That's all basic and alternative are doing. It's the same thing, it's almost the same language, only, only, I think, what FB's intention was, was to get those odd projects, those, capture what is not in, you know, the basic and alternative might be fine for a normal neighborhood. At least, this is how, the way I thought of it, and the effort of the FB being so much more specific, and it may be overkill, but, I thought the reason for getting into that level was because we need to capture these little tiny properties that are non-conforming.
I think you're right. That's why, that's why there's a finer teeth, so to speak.
Yeah, and it's kind of ironic that we're using something that's really designed for China Lake, which has got its own set of problems.
No, I can disagree. I just think, Jen, I'm sorry, I don't...
You disagree with what?
That...
Well, I don't know if it was just based around China Lake.
I mean...
The FB one?
Forrest had done a watershed study of all of the AWOL lakes, you know what I mean?
Right, but he didn't come up with this originally, he was working with all sorts of towns. This is a, this is a, it's a template that he offered us, that they offered us, right?
But I'm suggesting that he was looking for a little better outcome than what might be available with the, than what would be available of just applying the state language of a basic LID standard as a threshold of disturbance versus what they derived in their office of using the terminology incidental and non- incidental.
Right, that was my understanding as well.
It's a finer, what am I trying to say?
You're saying it.
It's a more comprehensive or inclusive...
It's more individual, it's designed for individual sites, as opposed to just a generic set of sites, like you might find in a neighborhood.
It's, it's more comprehensive in what it considers, I guess.
Right, includes slope, like you were saying.
Yeah, includes slope, so it gets down to, I mean, there's water, I don't know. Mathematically, there's quite a difference between 15,000 feet, square feet is a trigger, versus 2,000 square feet.
Right.
Seven full...
But, depending on what the requirements are for each of those triggers, you know, they could be somewhat consistent with each other, just on a different scale, just different intent, intent of what kind of properties they're going to be capturing.
Yeah, I think using, using the language of incidental and whatever, it makes every site an individual site, instead of just a simple, generic site. These are generic, there's properties that can slip through, there's properties that can end up saying, no, I don't have to do anything. Well, we don't have that in shoreline, in our town. So, I mean, that's the only reason why I've always, if, I'm not against the language of basic, if we wanted to adapt this, you know, this basic LID versus an alternative LID, we have to measure it against the properties that we're applying it to, and see if it works. I think it will work for shoreline, I think it won't capture any properties, I think it will just, no one will have to do anything.
Well, I would certainly say that I am not a fan of bringing that in anyway.
So, that's why I, you know, I think that's what the benefit of the FB plan is, as much as it's kind of a pain, you know, so that's my take on it. My take is the state is too generic. It's a good, you know, guidance, but I don't think we can apply it to our custom town, because, you know, it's not customizable. So, that's why I don't, I still would prefer to stay with the LID, I mean, with the language NFB, but I, basically, I don't see them as working together.
Then maybe, maybe we're fetching up a little too much, hang our hat on the terminology that's in the, let's look at that.
Oh, there's plenty of terminology that's in the stuff we're talking about.
I don't know what we're running on the applications, I know it's been a pet thing of yours, but...
No, I'm looking in that application form again, because that's where we're kind of, that's where this came up.
That's where this came up. I think that we have plenty of verbiage in there right now, in the ordinance, and I would love to be able to cut where we can, instead of adding more stuff.
How about this, a quick, a quick thought, just see if this applies at all. On, on LID application form in the manual.
Okay.
New residential development.
Appendix, I think?
Yes.
Appendix, B1. I'm on page one of two, for, for new residential development.
Appendix A, excuse me.
I think this might work, and it would, and it would unplug our, diffuse controversy.
I'm seeing, okay.
Appendix B1, I think.
B1?
Yeah, three after eight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, why couldn't you just change the language when you get halfway down, you know, you're number five on this form, and you blah, 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 and then you get your checkmark, basic LID standard, alternative LID standard.
Incidental, non- incidental.
And what I, what I suggest there is plug in incidental LID standards, non- incidental LID standards.
I think it's worth trying.
Well, it would, then it would be seamless, where there's no, I understand completely what you're saying.
Okay.
That we're jumping from horse to horse in, in the text, and then bringing the state language into our application, whereas, it's really been abandoned in our document, in our draft of laws. So, we might as well, if we're going to go, and we see the sense of Forrest's template here, let's just use it, and not confuse the issue by jumping back and forth between the state and Forrest Bell.
Well, it will be helpful, I think, to at least have some citations into here, because there's this whole discussion of all the different remediation methods.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, chapter five certainly is good. But yeah, I mean, we need to be fairly surgical in saying, okay, look at this thing, look here, you may find things of value elsewhere, but we, you know, in this document, is not looking there, it's looking here. So, if you can find your review, basically, the idea is to not confuse people when you're pointing there, that they're going to be trying to pull in things that are not intended for the town, that...
We would confuse ourselves. I will, and I'll own it today.
Well, I vote for chapter five. I vote sort of like on that citation, the one, yeah, main LID manual with the little two.
Yeah.
Let's just specify, it's chapter five.
Does that pretty much take in?
I think it gets us off the hook.
Well, I think if we're not pulling in the state form, which is kind of where we were going at the end of the last workshop, those, the basic and alternate doesn't rear us ugly head, and we can move on with where we were.
Exactly.
So, we got a new suit, a new, a new...
Well, you just changed a basic LID to a non- incidental.
Personally, yes, because it happens to be simpler than where the possibilities were.
Can somebody direct me to that, chapter five citation again? Is it the last page of chapter five?
You're talking about the citation, or the, what the citation pointing to?
The one that we were, it was basically just a, I see it, practice profiles.
Yes, practice profiles.
Yeah.
And it's actually, you know, it gets right in the meat of the matter, doesn't get all balled up in, in the stuff we were talking about, it's just, here's some things that you can do, and what's involved, and what the, what the good parts and the bad parts are, and...
Does it not include all of the items that were listed under 2.3 and 3.3? Which is basically embracing the basic and all this.
Yeah, and, but in fact, if you look at 2.3 and 3.3, it talks about, it points out which of these other methods are going to be suitable for this residential and for the non-residential, multifamily, and what have you.
And even there, only four examples, I mean, they're giving you a set of ideas, they're not saying...
And I question whether we want to do that, shouldn't we not say, here's all your list of possibilities, find whatever will suit your property, and your budget, and your inclinations, and if that does the trick of, you know, reducing to pre-development standards, you know, as far as the runoff, you know, you have a good maintenance plan for it, should we micromanage that? Or need we micromanage that?
I think in practice, what, what will happen is they will have a, an employee or a volunteer, I'm not sure what the caliber of the individuals would be, but it would be somebody versed in LID management practices.
You mean attached to town hall?
No, 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 through either York County Soil and Water, which would be a, be a little more high-powered than probably what would be most, more commonly happening, would be somebody like, I don't know if any of those guys have come in and talked to us from the AWOL office, not Linda, but the two staff people that work with her.
Dustin.
Dustin is, yeah, and there's a fellow by the name of Sam, who's a, he came up to our worksite.
Right.
And was talking about vegetation. We have a little worksite on the shore of Wilson Lake, and this fellow came out and said, was checking out, cutting bridge, vegetation removal, and said, I'll come back in the spring and go over with you, what are some of your options of replanting? And he's, he's certified in some, some degree, you know, to do this one. And Kenny has mentioned, you know, that those people would be very involved in assisting him in terms of indicating what, what would be needed to solve.
Okay, so I've just made a notation for myself at the top of the citations thing to make, to allow some, you know, some incidental doc, sorry, signed document to the ordinance itself, that would actually list local resources for incidental, and local resources for non- incidental, so...
What do you mean by local resources?
What he was just talking about, the, the different, this organization can help me do this, that organization, you know, specializes in the lower-end incidental stuff, these guys have engineers available to them, they might be better for the non- incidentals.
We're writing an ordinance, not a manual. I don't think we, we need to do that, I honestly don't. Well, you know, can those, people find their own professionals? Can, can refer them, there's always, we know that we've got York County soil...
I'm sure Ken recommends it.
Do we have consensus then?
BNP's, the bigger projects, they need engineers, the littler projects might not need an engineer.
True.
They all need someone who understands water flow.
Do we have consensus then on the, the resolution of our little problem here with, with jumping back and forth between state and Forrest Bell language, that we're going to try suggesting to Ken and the board, that when we start talking about applications, which I think we're just going to make a brief recommendation, because this is something, as I mentioned to you, I think it's largely Kenny's purview, we can make suggestions to him, but he's the guy that's going to be handling these things back and forth across the desk, but to make it coherent, in terms of what we're giving him as a draft ordinance, that we're, we would plug in on the application form as a template, under 5A, we would say incidental LID standards, and under 5B, non- incidental LID standards.
It's a bit of a Band-Aid, because I think there's going to be other elements of that that are going to have a similar problem, that they're not necessarily dovetailing with...
Which ones?
The, the forms that Tom was looking at from the state, versus the language that we have in the ordinance itself, so...
Yeah, they, I can see another one.
Just change the words to fit the ordinance, I mean, I'm not really seeing a problem with...
The, the other one I called...
The, the specific phrase that he used, or the specific question, I totally agree with, yeah. See, that sentence, you change that word to that word, and this sentence, you change this word to that word.
You're right.
Not a problem, but you keep reading and...
That's going to be under treatment, Jen had refined that a little bit, in terms of, I'm looking on page two of two now, the triggers of runoff were a little, had been tweaked within our, our own work, so that went wrong.
Right, so, you know, the checkboxes would maybe say a little different, but essentially, taking, I totally agree with taking the, the format of the form, and then plugging in what the requirements of the actual language that are in here are.
Yeah, yeah.
And just sort of, you know, slap on the top of here, do this, change this one, or remove that, we've got four points instead of five, or we've got six points instead of three, or whatever, to just make it similar.
Yeah, because this is also, this is like, this is application, but it's also a partial worksheet, you know, so, it's going to, it's going to lead you to, so, yeah, but we'll just use it, use the language that comes from our...
Right.
...ordinance instead.
So, I guess if the word being, use it as a template, and you may have used that word.
Right, that's what it is.
Several times.
It's a template that comes from a guy.
That, that, just, but change the, you know, what's on there, and just say, okay, yes, we do need a standard, we do need a format, that the first one is going to be the incidental, then the non- incidental, and then, what's going to apply to each? And, you know, do we have to calculate disturbed previous areas probably?
May, may I suggest that we, do we have consensus then on that notion of cleaning up the language in our model application, so to speak?
Right, but we will not be able to point to their application, say, you know, use that, we have to avoid that.
You know, they're going to get the application in that office over there.
Right, right. So, we're pointing, we're pointing to chapter five for the moment, period.
Okay, may, may we go back to citations then, and finish that up?
Sure. Where to?
Possible.
I see that we ended up on, right here, on 123.
We're going to, we go into...
Isn't that what we just talked about?
It is.
Yeah, I'm just getting back on...
Okay, so, in that one, the LID guidance manual for main communities, that corresponds with the super script two at the bottom of page 12, and I believe, and we can just go over again, that the consensus at this moment is that we're going to point to that LID guide, but not the whole thing, just chapter five.
I don't think...
Yeah, and chapter five is the, the good old treatment stuff.
Yeah, it's the idea book.
And in fact, it's pretty highly informative, so that, I think, would be very helpful. 1A1, okay, practice profiles. Okay, so, page 13?
First reference is the, I think, main erosion and sediment control BNP's.
Yes.
They're just citing the document that's cited in the text.
Yeah, BNP's. Now, I got a question mark there, because we're talking about the whole darn thing, main erosion, sediment control. Okay, so, I'm going to grab the URL from there. So, all these URLs are what I found in a web search at the time I was coming up with this, that seemed to correspond with the intent of the original text. In some cases, what was originally pointing to, or referring to, sort of changed if it was in citation in the first place, it was, it was potentially different. Or maybe it wasn't ever really detailed, but this seemed to be corresponding with headings, you know, document headings that they're talking about.
You have two citations here, from...
And this was...
...erosion and sediment control.
Right. One of his, actually, one's erosion and sediment control BNP's, and the next one is main sediment and erosion control law.
One's in...
And those are the two things from the text that I keyed off.
One's in statutes, and one's in...
But one's the handbook that you get when you take the course to get your, so you can get your permit by rule. So, the construction person, the digger, the excavator, will have that handbook in his possession.
Okay. So, what I didn't know, so I know how to get to this document, but what I didn't really see from this description, or perhaps thought needed more discussion, is where in here do we look? So, description of temporary and permanent best management practices and performance of... in performance of main erosion and sediment control BNP's. So we're looking for a description of temporary and permanent best management practices for, I assume that the type of situation they're going for. Yeah, because that's part of the incidental disturbance form. Site, plant, or sketch included. So basically, what is expected, what is the, can we draw a fence around? What is expected, what Tom is expecting as a description of temporary and permanent best management practices? Can we point and say something like that?
There's a whole handbook. It's a construction handbook.
So the BNP's, we're talking about the whole thing?
The BNP's are things like putting up fencing and mulching and.
So we're pointing to this whole document?
And grass. Yeah, it's a whole, it's a document that backs up the law. So it is, it's all the practices that you have to use on a construction site.
Okay, so this thing that says main erosion and sediment control BNP's is talking about temporary soil stabilization, sediment abatement, permanent soil stabilization.
Yeah, all of it.
All of it is what we want to point to here.
Yeah. Yeah, and they'll know, the excavator will have to know that already, because he'll be on a list of people who have the permit by rule.
Okay, so.
The next citation here.
So we're getting rid of, I'm getting rid of the question mark, I'm saying, that whole darn thing. W E, whole enchilada.
Your next citation was Main Sediment and Erosion Control Law?
Yeah.
Citing a main statute, right?
Well, that's all I could come up with, and frankly, I really don't think it has a whole lot of value. Because if I, when I go there, it's just a serious, it's like three paragraphs of serious legal ease and citations for subsection, whatever. Basically, it's subsection 420-C, Erosion and Sedimentation Control. It's titled, Main Revised Statutes, Title 38, Waters and Navigation, Chapter 3, Protection and Impervious Waters. And it's like, what is the value of this thing? So let's just blow that away.
You could even just take that whole sentence fragment out, the Main Sediment and Erosion Control Law, because if they're using the main erosion and sediment control BNP's, then they are following the law.
Okay, to which I say, bless you for that suggestion. That's excellent, because, you know, how is somebody supposed to comply with this thing that you can't even show them what it is or where it is?
Right.
Okay?
The law just says that if you follow this handbook, you get expedited.
So this lovely terminating phrase here in D is gone. It ends with BNP's Superscript 2, period. Yes?
The next item, pre and post-development stormwater accounts.
Hey, we just simplified this puppy.
Is citing the LID Guidance Manual again, which has been cited throughout the.
LID Guidance Manual, yes, is, and what section of the LID Guidance Manual? Is it a different section than what we've been looking at before?
Nowhere are it.
Okay, so the next one is going to be, I think you're.
Probably page 13.
Probably in the Stormwater Management Plan section? Pre and post, okay, it's about, it's on page 13. It's about pre and post-development stormwater calculations. So where is that?
It's 3B.
And where is it in the?
Yes, 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 yes.
What part of the manual?
So what I was thinking is maybe section B1, B2, B3 in the LID manual. That was my writing question mark. So if we look in the guidance manual, again. Back here. And B1, B2, and B3, I have no idea at this moment what those are, but they seem to have some promise. I was looking at this before.
Oh, the appendix?
In the LID Guidance Manual.
That throws you into the appendix.
Yes, so, okay, so that's, that's an application. Is there something that isn't an application? Pre and post-development stormwater calculations. I don't think they have that in there.
Don't they need a warrant for it?
Well, there is, no. B1, B2, and B3 are not anything but.
Not specifically for that citation.
They're application forms. What the heck was I, what was I thinking? I have no idea.
I think you'd want to go to the next citation.
So, no, that's not good. So, pre and post-development stormwater calculations, following criteria set forth, okay. Shall I do a search for stormwater calculations?
I thought, I thought the stormwater calculations were in another book.
It's possible.
There are some in you.
But it does say the LID manual. So if it's not the LID manual, we can't see it.
I just can't see it in the.
Okay, one moment, please. Okay, so there's nothing, okay, nothing that says stormwater calculations in there.
Well, there is in the appendix there.
So there's 170 references to the word stormwater.
You'll have to calculate this, the half-inch runoff.
Oh, so they are.
That could be what they're talking, it could be. I mean, it would match up with all that number.
Okay, so let's.
But that's going to be different, because we tweaked those things.
Right, and we'll have to change that.
We'll have to have.
We'll just sort of slog here.
Our. Pre and post-stormwater calculations.
Yeah, we'll cite our own.
Oh, following criteria, what they mean, rooftop driveway, walkway, patio.
Follow.
Let's just change the sense and just not even, let's just say.
But it's talking about. But it is talking about calculations, right? Somewhere in the LID Guide, no, because I'm not seeing.
Well, in the application, on the application.
In the appendix, like you.
In the, in the application, there is, when you look at the, it gives you kind of, there's a bit of a worksheet that where you calculate your pervious areas, especially when you get into your alternate LID standards. Rooftop, driveway, walkway.
So in other words, there's something, somewhere where we could pro loin what we need, but not actually refer to it, we'll pull it somewhere or put it on our form.
Maybe we should just say pre and post-stormwater calculations include.
Calculating.
Slopes.
Okay, so I'm looking at the alternate.
Frontways, rooftops.
Okay, so we've got total impervious, total disturbed pervious, so that's kind of what we're shooting for here?
And the treatment too, and existing would be a calculation to come up with that based on.
Pre and post-development.
It's a comparison.
Yeah.
You're taking pre and.
Are we doing that anywhere in this LID man, even on the applications?
What do you mean?
It would be in the applications, but I don't see it.
You have to figure it out.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around why it says, you know, following criteria set forth, so there's some kind of calculations following criteria in the LID manual.
The criteria are rooftop driveway, walkway, patio, lawn, calculate disturbed pervious area, disturbed pervious area, and then.
Okay, so are we going to pull that and put it somewhere?
We'll convert it to.
Put it on our form, maybe? Or, I mean, where's it going? How do we point to it? How do we say, this is what we're talking about, when you've got this sort of semi-cryptic sentence in the ordinance?
Maybe we don't need to use criteria set forth in the LID manual.
So just pre and post-development.
Stormwater calculations, yeah.
We can have our own criteria.
See the ordinance?
Supporting calculations and data, including but not limited to.
Look ahead. Okay, pre and post-development stormwater calculation.
Yeah, because they're doing, you're doing.
And if you want to know how to do that, you can ask the CEO or whatever.
Well, it's just, it's asking for supporting calculations and data. Yes, you ask the CEO, you ask the soil and water people, you get your professional that you know how to do it. Because that's the calculation you need to do to even design your whole site, so.
Following criteria set forth in the LID manual. See you later, is that correct?
No, get rid of the LID manual.
Right, I'm saying, that goes away. So in B, it says pre and post-development stormwater calculations.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going to the LID manual often enough that it's very clear that it exists, and it is a valuable resource, and you may want to find.
And it probably will, you know, you've got to figure it out for each of these projects. So I bet if we read in the profiles, there would be, you know, it shows you how to design each one, so it will show you how to, what you need to know for calculations. It won't do the calculation for you. It's a lot of work to do, but.
How did we get so wound up in phosphorus control? Now, I don't see any mention of phosphorus control on page 17 after.
Okay, so we've gotten rid of some citations, that's cool. How are we on 17 also?
No, we're not on 17. On page 13, the last two citations on, looking at.
13, I think we're done. I just wiped out three citations on.
Okay, you're omitting then the last two there.
Oh, yes, and, okay, and phosphorus control and lake water shoots. Got it, okay, so let me just try looking there first.
Well, I'm not finding a reference.
Okay.
In the text.
Okay. One moment, please.
Why do we need that?
I think I was having a problem finding what we're looking for. So I said, well, okay, look in both of these sections, maybe we got something going on here. Okay, so let me go there. And this was about the pre and posts. Oh, yeah, so here we are back in.
Well, we're on 14.
Stormwater BNP's again. And we were just there, right? We're interested in stormwater BNP's. Phosphorus, hold on. Yeah, we're just there. Oh, okay, right, so before it was Stormwater BNP's Manual, and this is just the Stormwater BNP's, which defaults to me. All right, so. Pre and post, I think. I'm very happy to say, let's go with simplicity. Oh, yeah, pre PPE and post PPE calculations, Appendix D worksheets. That's what I think I was going for here. So if you look at the main stormwater BMP or Best Management Practice Manual, there's this Volume 1, which is the management manual. There's a Volume 2 phosphorus control. And I will grant you that we're not directly talking about phosphorus control in this pre and post calculations. And let me just double-check there, because that is in fact talking only about phosphorus, and it is not germane to what we are talking about at this moment.
Well, maybe you're, maybe that reference is actually on page 14. You got it?
Yeah, because there's a lot of.
Yeah, but the pre and post-stormwater calculations. Yeah, so basically, what I have here, the thing in front of you, page, I guess it's no page, it just says page 13, it's multiple page here for the citations. It talks about pre and post-stormwater, development stormwater calculations, which triggered this. And then I have two suggestions under it, like, eh, eh, you know, these are what we're looking for? I don't know. But looking at this now, I'm, yeah, see, this is phosphorus, so it is not germane. I reinforce the earlier step of, very wise step, of just getting rid of that phrase. And then we're done, and then we move on.
Okay.
Yeah. So that phosphorus thing is basically a bit hairy.
Well, it's going to come up to the next page again, though, right?
Maybe, but at least it will be tied to something that's talking about it.
Yes, we're done with that.
So right now, there's, there's no reason to go to that, those manuals there. Which means, I think, we're done with this, and we move on to page 14. That stormwater, the top part of the stormwater management plan does not appear to have anything citable. CIT as opposed to CIT.
Just D, pre phosphorus control.
Got it. Under 3C, on page 14. 14, 3C, okay, so coming back to 14. Ooh, look at that, we're like near the end of the citations, how about that? Okay, so 14 is talking about phosphorus control methodology and supporting documentation, including calculations using the DP's phosphorus control guide. Okay, so, actually, back up a little bit. Or maybe I even missed that.
And Paul, may I suggest, since this is bringing in a licensed professional engineer, why don't we let the applicant talk to the engineer and find out what his citations are for this bit of methodology? Because it, it's way, I think it's quite outside of the canon of an applicant for residential.
What, the phosphorus export standards?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and also, we sort of skipped at the bottom of page 13, and I sort of missed it on the citation page because it's so small. Non-incidental disturbance form, so it just says, here's your, you know, do your non-incidental disturbance form. We don't have it yet. We're not going to cite it anywhere, but we need to have some sense of what it's going to be.
It'll be what we were already talking about.
Right.
There'll be one form, and it's either going to be.
It's just on the list.
Non-incidental or incidental.
We're not going to cite it, you know, because it's not anywhere else. It's a piece of paper that you need to come up with. It's in the CEO's office, and here you go.
And it'll be online, and just leave my whole eye or application.
Yes, that would be a ludders thing. So on 14, you know that good old Table 1. My question is, do we strike all of Table 1? It is in the thing that we're going to cite. We're going to say, here's where you can find information, and this information, do we want it to change if the state?
Yes.
Document changes?
It should be.
So if so, we shouldn't put this here? And what way it makes it have to be shorter?
Put the caveat, say, the most current, the DEP per acre phosphorus allocation.
Yeah, and then located, you know, here. And if it's not there, you know, even if some of these change, you shouldn't be able to find them. It shouldn't be moved that dramatically that you won't be able to find.
It could be posted somewhere. Yes.
And we could also, you know, keep on our website where all of this stuff is going to be, you know, another thing that helps to find these documents, we need to.
There are other reference things on, yeah, he's got reference stuff up there for people, for soils and stuff.
Okay, so on page 14, the only one I have is the phosphorus export standard, which is page 1. And so where I think that is, where I found something that looks very promising, is the main gov DEP land stormwater, stormwater BNP's, and then by town. So if I go there. What I end up with is an Appendix C. What's the date of that? I'm just curious. On web?
Yes.
November 8, 2010. And what it is, is per acre phosphorus allocations for selected main lakes. And it's by town, and Acton is right on the top. So it has all the lakes, and let's just say phosphorus standard.
Would you?
Per acre phosphorus allocation. There you go.
Would you assume then, you know, given that citation date, that those have not been re?
Yeah, this was around the time that this document started living, I think, maybe three or four years ago. I certainly couldn't swear on which side of the fence it's on, but it'd be similar. But, okay, let's just take a little spot check here. So what I've got is phosphorus allocation, pounds per acre per year. Wilson, .034, Swan, .034. Okay, let me just tell you what I've got here. Why don't you hit me with a lick, and I'll tell you what the number is.
Wilson.
Wilson's .034.
Yep.
So it's the most current one. So we need to plug in very big.
Hanson, .041.
Yeah.
Which is the one that, okay, Mausen, I guess was the lake at risk. So .043 for north, .033 for south. North, .043, south, .033. So this is, looks like the document where this came from.
Oh, we got it, yep.
And so what we can just have is a citation saying, you know, you want to see what this is? Go to this document, it'll have the latest figures, that's what the state's using, that's what we're going to need. And we get rid of this whole stinking table.
That's good.
Okay, so, and what is?
Well, okay, I would just make a vote for this, the way this is laid out, even to a layman, there is some sense to this in terms of how it's applied to his own acre, so to speak. In other words, I think Ken or any of us could describe what these standards mean in terms of the applicant's project. How would it at least apply? Not specifically how his specific situation would impinge on it, but how the state uses this number in evaluating what has to be done to stay within those thresholds. So the fellow is not dumping more phosphorus per acre per year.
Is that a recommendation to add something to it that is not here now? Or to not strike the table? Well, I'm not quite sure where you're going with it.
That's just a vote for the sensibility of leaving it in there, because the numbers do mean something. It can be explained quite.
But at some point, they may be wrong.
No, not if your citation is throwing it back to the most.
So we'll say, use these, except if this is different from those, then use this.
No, use the most current citation applicable for main gov DEP Stormwater Management Plan's per acre phosphorus allocations.
Right, but you also wanna leave the table there, which could end up conflicting with some of the numbers.
Yeah, well, then you just add the caveat in your text here on Table One.
Okay, so as of some date, as of the draft date of this document, these were the numbers, something like that? So you're in favor of leaving this table in here, I gather?
The applicant would be required to calculate the amount of phosphorus leaving the site in brackets, using the most current DEP data, period, including pre and post phosphorus export.
Ooh, yeah, that looks like.
What?
Well, see that good old pre and post phosphorus export? That's where this other.
No, where are you pointing to?
Under Table One.
He's looking at page fourteen, page fourteen here, the top of the table. But it's talking about including, having, you're required to calculate, including pre and post. One of these citations that I had on the other page, that's really what belongs here.
Well, my little suggestion would be in brackets at the very end of the sentence, Table One, in brackets, applicant to use most current phosphorus standards as developed by main DEP. And then you throw the citation.
Okay, so, yeah, but you're talking about leaving the thing in.
I'm suggesting it has that.
Okay. So right now, I'm thinking that because, and I think I had missed this before, in that paragraph, in that same paragraph, it talks about applicant being required to calculate the amount of phosphorus leaving the site, pre and post phosphorus export. And the thing that I just quoted from before that didn't apply to where we were at the time, I think that applies here. That we're looking at Stormwater BNP's, excuse me, we're looking at LID Guidance Manual and the section where it's talking about phosphorus. So we definitely have this thing by town is exactly what's on this table. So we do wanna have that, I think. Because we do need to say, the standard you are going to use is the most recent version of this. And to assist, as of such and such a date, these were the numbers. But we know that at some point, these may not be correct. And what we're saying is, yeah, they're helping. Here they are, but they may not really be these.
Right. I make a humble suggestion that in brackets, after the word Table One, which is in brackets.
Yeah.
On page fourteen.
Yeah.
Applicants shall use most current DEP phosphorus standards.
Located here.
Wait.
Okay. So basically, it's this, we should, you know, the CEO should certainly know to be able to say, oh, yeah, they haven't changed last time I looked. You're good with those. Or, yeah, we need to go change it. But I.
They're based on fairly nonchangeable.
Okay.
And you could, if you wanted to key this in, existing Table One is as of December two thousand and ten, whatever the hell it was.
I like the idea of taking it out.
I don't really care. I just wouldn't.
Well, you seem to.
I just would suggest that rather than talking about it in his words, Kenny or someone who has to work with the applicant could kind of frame the issue, given this language that's here, just saying that, Mr. Jones, we have to make sure that through LID techniques, that you're not dumping more than point four, point oh four pounds per acre per year in your new development into a square pond that is allowed by the state. It just gives you something, a citation.
Well, if we look at C, which is where the actual citation is, right? Phosphorus Control Methodology and Supporting Documentation, Including Calculations Using DEP's Phosphorus Control Guide. There it is. It's written right out. To design phosphorus control measures that meet the phosphorus export standards. Are they listed in that guide? I mean, is that guide what you're looking at right now? Are you looking at the DEP Phosphorus Control Guide?
I am looking at, you mean phosphorus control in lake watersheds? That's the one we're talking about, correct? This is the one where the table is, actually, the Appendix C happens to be at the end of that document. And the heading here is, and where I think I might refute Tom's statement that we can't necessarily be precise here. We can point to this document and talk about the per acre phosphorus allocation, pounds per acre per year. That's the head of this column. And say, those are the numbers that anyone uses. There's a list by lakes and the town. And there's a number of columns, and that's one of them. The oh three four, the oh three three, the whatever. And that's the only thing that we saw fit to put in this table. So, you know, it's not necessarily anything that needs to be nailed down at this very moment. But I suggest that, you know, the specific value of that table, I think, is diminished just by the fact that it could disagree with something else.
Well, the table seems to be a for instance. It's almost like it's saying, for instance, this is what the applicant would have to do.
It's just.
Well, it does seem to state that use these numbers. And obviously, if we chose to put a citation for the real numbers, which mostly we'll agree with these, and leave this in, we would need to say something like, you know, the examples shown below were current as of. Then it's very clear that, you know, or some phrase to indicate that what you're seeing in front of you may not be the current numbers. You do need to go to the state to figure out what those numbers are. Unless we just don't wanna do that, and then we will leave the citation out totally and say, these are the numbers you're gonna use. What, in other words, how do we handle if they're different? Do we wanna stick with what's in the ordinance? Or do you wanna stick with what the state says?
Stick with the state, absolutely, state.
Yeah, have to stick with the state.
Then we need to be clear that this may not, in some unforeseeable future, agree with what the state says, and we want to use the state.
Easily handled, which is easily handled by the insertion of the language, number one, that delineates what is the date of these standards, which is two thousand and ten. And as an insert of the sentence, after the words Table One, saying applicant shall use most current standards filed at DEP.
And then, so we can say, Table One, as of, current as of, the publication document of the two thousand and ten, whatever that date was, in that document.
In brackets, two thousand and ten, whatever the hell that says on that thing in front of you.
Okay. I concur with that. As long as we're clear that you need, you're responsible for using the current state standard. Okay, so.
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, I see no citation.
Yeah, but fourteen, we didn't talk about the amount of phosphorus in pre and post phosphorus export. So I think that that would end up being the same thing that I had at the very end of page thirteen, the thing that says, and phosphorus control in lake watersheds. Well, a lot of you said, no, yeah, we don't need that. So what I did is I just copied it down, fourteen, or in fact, moved it. And so that brings me to a document that says, Main Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual. It has a Volume One and a Volume Two. The Volume Two, very close to where I pulled the table that's sorted by town and acre per acre phosphorus allocations, there's worksheets and Excel files, which were phosphorus calculations, pre PPE and post PPE calculations. That also talks about mitigation credit, which I don't think we care about. There's a project phosphorus export summary. So those are all part of Appendix D in Volume Two of that document.
Can I ask a question again?
Yeah.
Three C, it's referring to DEP's Phosphorus Control Guide. Is that, I'm asking again, is that what you're looking at? That's the citation.
You would think the export standard would be in that guide.
Ah, okay, so I guess I had totally missed that on fourteen. One moment, please. Phosphorus Export Standards, Table One. Okay, so where's the phrase phosphorus export standards? Is that even in here? Or did I just dream it up?
No, it's in C.
Three C, break the court.
Do we see the phrase phosphorus export standards?
Yes, it's right before the word Table One.
Last phrase.
Three C.
And C. Okay, it doesn't say the word export, but, okay. Phosphorus standard.
Phosphorus export standards.
In Draft Five, it says, under three C, page fourteen.
Oh, thank you.
If one paragraph off from where you were looking at.
Light dawn's on Marblehead. Okay, so. Okay, so C is actually where all of this stuff's coming from. And then the next paragraph atop the thing that talks about Table One is really just piggybacking off of what C is saying.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Great confusion has been narrowly averted. Okay, so, but that is on page fourteen. And, okay, so. When we see, okay, using the DEP's Phosphorus Control Guide. DEP's Phosphorus Control Guide. I think I just hadn't gotten that in here.
Well, it may not have the table in it that you're talking, you know, that might be why.
Well, right, so.
Because it might not be in that guide.
We really need two of them, because there's the one thing in C, in three C, we have the methodology. And then in following that, we have the table. And we already know where the table is. And so what I'm shooting for here is to come up with, okay, so do you have in front of you the Main Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual? No? Okay, so.
I have this, no, I Stormwater Management.
So.
Chapters from that book, Xerox, though.
Okay, so this would be Volume Two.
For smaller projects.
Volume Two Phosphorus Control is where I'm heading in this particular.
I've got chapter six from that, from the phosphorus control in lake watersheds.
Uhh, I didn't see that. Oh, okay, chapter six of Volume Two.
You gotta do it.
And I've got chapter three.
This is actually. This is actually one of the appendices, although it's possible that you'd see that. And so in Volume Two, there's a chapter three, meeting the project's phosphorus budget. And there's a chapter four, treatment factors for phosphorus BNP's. I wonder if what we want might be in there. But what I was sort of targeting is the fact that in that same volume, in Appendix D, there are worksheets. And they are worksheets that actually do the calculations that this thing seems to be asking for.
Yeah, and where did I, I have those somewhere.
Phosphorus Control.
Here they are, worksheet one, PBB calculations.
Yeah, so Appendix D, you know, one of the worksheets.
I even have one worked out.
So can, can I basically say, all right, here, we're gonna sort of, we're gonna be in this manual, what's the best citation for that three C? And we don't necessarily have to come up with it now, but if we could have.
Well, there is a citation. I just don't know what, I mean, I don't have that book.
Yeah, well, I don't see what the citation is.
Control Guide, using DEP's Phosphorus Control Guide.
DEP's Phosphorus Control Guide.
Just throw the book in.
Okay. Don't tempt her.
No, I'm just trying to get organized myself, but I mean, I just.
Okay, I'm just looking up Phosphorus Control Guide to see if it's actually, that phrase is in here somewhere? And it is not.
Yeah, so that might be misstated. It probably is referring to Volume Two Phosphorus Control.
And we certainly, I mean, it's, as long as they're good, comprehensive things, do we care? You know, but I will see what I can find here, if I can actually find this. Because I see that it's.
Well, here's the chapter that I pulled from, so I must have found it somewhere.
I see it's got superscript four, but I don't see where it actually says Phosphorus Control Guide. That's the problem.
Folks, we're gonna wrap this up in about five minutes.
See, I've got the chart you were looking at, so I've got the calculation.
Yeah, and that's.
I've got this from Volume Two.
That's in, you know, this guide.
Right. Technical guide to evaluating.
Someone always think we had different days today.
Different days?
Yeah, Ken and I had kind of an exciting day today.
Let's just say that regardless of the level of excitement in our days, we have things to do.
Well, in this particular case, I think that this Phosphorus Control Guide is a typo. And I think it means the document that you're looking at.
What part of that?
And if you make that citation.
Where in here, though?
If we were to make a slight error here, I don't think it would be of consequence. Let's get on with it.
Oh, I thought we were leaving after we finished this.
Then.
We are, and we gotta finish in five minutes.
We will simply say, to be discussed later.
No, I think you could cut to the chase and put your best foot forward and put the citation that you think.
Tom, how much ammunition do you want opponents of this ordinance to have?
I'm looking at short this ordinance. I'd like to know.
If they go through these citations.
Take this ordinance apart.
I'm in favor of that.
If they go through these citations, God bless them.
When we're done.
I'm definitely in favor of simplifying if we can, absolutely.
But we need to know if this citation is correct, DEP's Phosphorus Control Guide.
Either we're not finding this guide. I mean, I don't know.
Okay, so let's change that to the proper document.
Let me just find.
And then go on.
In our, okay, Phosphorus Control Guide. Let me see if I can.
I think the word guide would be kinda.
Yeah, I think it's, it shouldn't be capitalized. Yeah, I don't think guide should be, I don't think guide is meant to be capitalized. I don't think that's the title of a book.
All right. Let's see what Google can find here.
Good.
I think it's mistyped. I think it's referring to Volume Two Phosphorus Control.
Phosphorus Control Guide.
I don't think guide was supposed to be capitalized.
All right, Stormwater Best Practices Manual found it.
Phosphorus Control.
Oh, yes, and now I'm saying, to order a hard copy of Volumes One and Three, this manual, then talks about phosphorus control, a technical guide. So they're playing fast and loose with what I'm searching for here. Try it one more time.
It's what it says at the bottom.
It's referring to Volume Two.
Yeah, right here, it's.
Yeah.
That's exactly what it goes.
So there's a typo in that, in paragraph C, it's mis.
So you think, you think that it should simply not have a capital G?
Yeah.
Really?
Or that we should just put the proper name of the document in it, because it's creating confusion.
Well, and in fact, that is the proper document. That's.
You found the data in the.
I, oh, let's say that I'm comfortable. I'm comfortable that this is an alternate source of the information that it was talking about.
It's not an alternate. There's a typo in the ordinance.
Okay, so this is talking about DEP's Phosphorus Control Guide, and this is from China, the town of China. And according to the procedure in the Phosphorus Control Guide, that's in the DEP's Stormwater Management, Stormwater Final. We've got the Phosphorus Control Guide.
I think they just kind of trunked it into the title, because the full title is Phosphorus Control in Lake Watersheds, A Technical Guide to Evaluating New Development.
Okay, it's. Okay, so what is that? So what is that?
That is Volume Two.
That's Volume Two, it's the one that had all the data in, yeah.
Okay, so conceivably, we could broadly point to two, yes?
Volume Two, just write the whole title down.
Okay, so, I'm gonna shoot for Volume Two here, and make some changes, and we'll talk about it next time around.
What do you mean, changes?
Well, I mean, change slightly C to what Volume Two is titled.
Yeah, okay, yes, because that's Volume Two Phosphorus Control in Lake Watersheds, Technical Guide to Evaluating New Development. And it's really confusing in C because there shouldn't have been a capital G there.
Okay, and it greatly simplified the whole title. Nice.
But it, yeah, it did, but it shouldn't be a capital G.
Okay, moving on, yes.
I see no citations on page fifteen and sixteen.
There are no citations for fifteen and sixteen, from what I could tell.
Yep.
But as we know, I'm prone to error, so you might wanna look through it.
I have, I have done that.
Okay.
And I'm moving on to page seventeen. I'm in the middle of the page on section four, point three, point five, the previous services, where once again, we-
Number one.
We cite our most favorite manual, LID.
And appropriately so. Yeah, so-
And thereafter.
Do we, presumably, we don't point to the whole thing, because we know it's got things we don't want to see.
Oh, well.
Let's just play a little joke on her. So, this can be achieved through low-impact development techniques as described in the LID manual. Chapter live? Yes? Is in chapter five what we were pointing to before? For the LID techniques that we want people to look at?
It sure was.
So, chapter five D? All right, so, chapter five.
It is with-
Not mixed them over.
Profound- Profound happiness that I say, I think we've got it, and thank you, Paul, for your diligence, and-
I hope you're not implying this is ready to turn over.
For today?
Yes, I'll go with that.
Well, I think this thing is ready to turn over to the plan.
This thing that we didn't wanna talk about today?
Well, that thing's gonna get removed.